Free school bus routes and bus stops established by the supervisor of transportation and delegates authority to the superintendent and director of business to make changes as needed during the 2022-2023 school year. C is the approval of voucher joint resolution. It is recommended by the superintendent and the board of education approves the following resolution as presented. D is the approval of the superintendent's agreement for free attendance. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board of education approves the LSA for tuition-free enrollment for 2022-2023 school year per the Ohio Revised Code 3313.64, superintendent agreement for free attendance. E is the approval awarding of mini grants for the 2022-2023 school year. Becky Benet, Danette Chance, Elise Happenbrack, Lee Heronovitz, Joe Isaacovich, Athis Ferry, and Stacy Moore reviewed the mini grant proposals for the 2022-2023 school year. The attached list of projects is recommended for approval for joint funding with the board of education and the Myersburg Schools Education Foundation. F is the approval of district social worker salary schedule. It is recommended by the superintendent, treasurer, CFO, and director of human resources that the board of education approves the attached district social worker salary schedule. G is the approval of district participation in federal and state-funded programs. It is recommended that the board of education approves the following resolution. The resolution is, as it be resolved, that the board of education, the Myersburg City School District, authorizes district participation in the federal-funded Esser Cares, CRF, ARP, Title I, Title II-A, Title III, Title IV-A, IDEA Special Education, Early Childhood Special Education, IDEA, McKinney-Vento, School Bus Purchase Program, Psychologist Intern, Auxiliary Programs for the 2022-2023 School Year, and designates Amy Dobson, Steve Homan, Katie Lucas, Stacy Moore, John Espy, and Dr. Laura Blessing, administrators of the programs assigned, and be further resolved that the board of education encourages the participation of staff, parents, and other interested citizens in the development of these programs. H is the approval of board member trainings. In accordance with the board policy, BHBA is recommended that the board of education approve the following requests for training as offered by the Ohio School Boards Association. October 13th, 2022, I have Ohio School Boards Association Southwest Region Fall Conference. November 13th through the 15th, 2022, is Ohio School Board Association's capital contract, capital conference. I is the approval of consent items A Alpha through H Helo. May I have a motion for those items, please?
I'll move for the approval of consent items A through H. Was that the ice cream truck?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Daffler, and we shall go back to A and go through the items as needed for this session.
So I'll do A and B. A is the resolution that we put on every year for the in lieu of transportation. It's a state law that we have to notify parents. There have been no changes in the in lieu of for next school years from what it's been for the last several years on there. And then the school bus routes, these are pretty close to being finalized on there. We still have to do some tweaks and changes to them, but they're pretty much ready to go for outcoming up in August. I think those are my two.
They're put on the website and...
No, students at the elementary level, we merge the other letter at the end of the school year that goes home for the next school year with the student ID on there, and they receive their route information through eLink on there. For obvious reasons, we don't post the website, the bus stops on the website, so...
You're correct. You're correct.
I think those are my items, I do believe.
The, this school choice coalition, that's something that has happened, we do every year. So, and join to, because that takes school dollars away from us as a district, so it's something we do. And then the superintendent's agreement, that student, I believe, is going to be a senior, so that's something we allow with the superintendent agreement. Item E, mini grants. Mr. Isaacovich and the foundation had a great meeting. I think you want to report out?
Yeah, basically, based on the joint funding, we funded over $15,000 for the various mini grants, some great programs. In fact, I got birds a day to Brent Plaza and to add the golf disc mini grant. Evidently, there is a Dayton disc golf club, and they donated 10 disc clubs to break, so the funds that were awarded to him to buy two will now be used for installation of his tent. So we now are well with it as far as this golf, so...
Yeah, it was a very generous, and that'll be on the board, donations for next month, but it's 10 baskets. They're pretty much brand new. And so we actually met with Jason and Jason and Brent this week to kind of start looking at some of those options of where to put it, and I think it'll be, it'll be very, it was a very generous donation.
It's going to be top shelf for real ones.
Yeah.
But many of it, yeah, we were able to fund all the mini grant requests. We actually had some carryover dollars from the previous year, where we didn't have to base ship and things like that, so everybody got taken care of, so very pleased about it.
Is anybody looking to make, make it an addition to what we already have?
What do you mean by that?
The city has a, that's out.
Oh, just...
Yeah, disco.
I can bring that up to Brent. I think one of the things they wanted to look at that we're still in the process of is putting it at the middle school. He's done a really good job of outlining where it would go onto the property, and the idea behind that would be that they would be able to use it for disc clubs for the district, middle school, PE students would be able to use it as well, and then really the public would be able to use it, not when, obviously, schools, kids are in the school building. But Joe, what you were talking about in terms of the mini grant, in terms of we would, we're going to take a look at the cement, using that money to put the cements in and the sleeves to cover them and all that, but Brent has a pretty sweet layout of the course that we were able to use back by the middle school, so...
Well, that makes sense, and then we'll go ahead and support this as a practice line.
Yeah, so we're going to bring Rich and Ed into it as well, because obviously, when they're mowing, you know, you've got big mowers and you don't want to hit the chains or any of that, but we're going to try to take a look at some nice concrete areas so the, the mowers can actually go around them and stay clear of the chains and all that, so...
If we did lessons, I may take...
Keep on the distributor, close, wouldn't it?
You want to talk about the social workers?
Oh, yes, sorry. So on item number, or item number, item number letter, item, letter...
Letter F.
F. On there, the district social worker scale, that social worker scale should look very familiar to you because it's teachers' salary schedule on there. So they've had some preliminary discussions of eventually, as you look around, most social workers are part of a teacher's bargaining unit in terms of that, so eventually, if that switch would happen with that, then the movement on there would go on there. What we're working with right now in terms of our current social workers that have been with us prior to the new ones being hired, we're in discussions with them about movement onto that scale, and even talked with them about it this time. If they would choose to stay on the old scale for right now, they would have that option to stay on to the scale, so we kind of work through everything, but the new social workers coming in would be on the scale, so... We're trying to align things up of the, the salary schedule that's been in there was, it's been in effect since when I was a principal, number, number of years ago, so slowly trying to clean some of those things up.
And then item G, that is participation in our annual approval of all of our title programs. We receive a significant amount of funding for those. And then the last item is approval of the board member trainings, so I think you all have agreed to, to take part in those, so... I think that's it?
Anything else?
Any, first, the others. Hearing none, may I have a roll call? Mrs. Nies?
Testing.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ampler?
Yes.
Mr. Todevine?
Yes.
Six is human resources agenda items. A is the approval of personnel reports, certificated and classified, and... B... Oh. B is the approval of the personnel reports supplemental stipend, certificated and classified. Within both sections, it is recommended that the board of education approve the following personnel reports. With doing so, employment within the City of Myersburg School District is contingent upon a candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. C is the human resources items A Alpha and B Bravo. It is recommended that the board of education approve those items. May I have a motion for items A and B?
Recommend for the approval of human resources items A.
Motion by Mr. Todevine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. I assume this goes to you, Mr. Homan?
Yes, we are, we're still in the shuffling and hiring and moving and transferring and all that good state right now. We are, we are getting there, but this is typical of your July and getting ready for August for the start of the school year, so nothing out of the ordinary on the personnel reports, though.
Any questions in regards to those two items? Hearing none, may I have another roll call?
Mr. Ampler?
Yes.
Mrs. Nies?
Testing.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Todevine?
Yes.
Seven is agreements and contracts, and again, I will read through these and come to the end and have one motion. A is the approval agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center. Superintendent, treasurer, CFO recommends approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for services to be provided during the 2022-23-23 school year. B is the approval agreement with Direct Energy Businesses Marketing LLC. It is recommended by the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of business, human resources, that the agreement with Direct Energy Business Marketing LLC be approved for services provided to the Myersburg City School District for the period of two years effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. C is the approval of agreement with Kettering City School District. It is recommended by the superintendent to enter into an agreement with Kettering City Schools District to enter into shared services agreement. D is the approval agreement with South Community SCI for Mental Health Services Satellite Court. Superintendent recommends approval of agreement with the South Community SCI to provide mental health services for Myersburg Satellite Court for 2022-2023 school year. E is the approval agreement with St. Rita School for the Deaf. It is recommended by the superintendent and director of student services to enter an agreement with St. Rita School for the Deaf. F is the approval agreement with I.Aim Boundaries Incorporated. Superintendent, treasurer, CFO recommends approval of the attached agreement with I.Aim Boundless Incorporated, IAB. This contract is effective August 22nd, 2022 through the end of 2022-2023 school year. G is the approval agreement with IXL Learning. Superintendent, treasurer, CFO recommends approval of the attached agreement with IXL Learning for instructional materials for the purchase of IXL licenses for all students in grades one through eighth in ELA in math. IXL offers comprehensive standards, alliance practice, and adaptive questions. IXL personalizes learning through analytics and real-time data. H is the approval agreement with Dayton Christian School. It is recommended by the superintendent and assistant superintendent, business manager, to enter into a three-year agreement with Dayton Christian Schools for the use of athletics, field space, parking lot, and use of concessions, restrooms, storage at Harmon Field effective July 21st, 2022. I is the approval agreement with Arbiter Sports LLC. It is recommended by the superintendent and treasurer, CFO, and into a, into a five-year agreement with Arbiter Sports LLC effective July 21st, 2022. J is the approval agreement between contracts A Alpha through H Hotel. It's recommended by the board of education approve those agreements, A Alpha through H Hotel. May I have a motion for those items, please?
I move for approval of the agreement and contract with I.A. Alpha and H Hotel, through H Hotel.
Second, it was H Hotel.
First by Mr. Todevine, and seconded by Mrs. Nies. Again, we'll go back to the beginning and walk through these items as needed.
Item A is an agreement with Warren County Educational Services to provide, you know, placement and services for students with special needs. The second agreement, Steve, you want to talk about that?
Sure. This is one that we still wanted to go ahead and bring to the board, even though it'd have been covered under our EPC agreement already, but it's another way that we want to kind of show that we've been able to work with cooperative purchasing councils to kind of lock in a little bit better rate for gas that's coming up, and so we at least wanted to bring it to you so you know what it, what we're doing and what we're looking like, you know, in terms of that, so...
I also met with an energy specialist last week who reviewed our bills and was just blown away at how efficient our utilities are here in the district, so kudos to Steve for that.
Did, did we have to go to them, or did they come to us in regards to that?
They come to us. Through the EPC, we get, we get billed through, negotiated right through electric and gas, and they are constantly looking out there to see what rates can get better locked in, things like that. Sound like we do the school bus purchasing program through them as well. And a lot of that costs energy savings, too, if you, as we look at things over the years, I mean, we have the WIBL agreement, which they do a fabulous job of really trying to regulate energy usage and for all their systems in there, so that's a, that's a big portion of it as well. And then, of course, over the years, you know, we've had other grants that have come to the, the board to approve for changing out lighting throughout the buildings, throughout the parking lots, all those things, so all those things come together and, and melt together, and it works out that way, so...
Item C is the approval with Kettering School District itinerant services, our speech services, occupational services, physical therapy that Kettering may need from time to time, and it's something we've been continuing to do, and it was in the past as well.
I, I wanted to ask Steve a question.
Oh, sorry.
And when we have conditions like right now, where, where it's so hot, and we have people in the buildings working, do we, do we still have the, if it's too, you know, if it's too this hot, I know the buildings are going to get hot, and is people in there working with the, with the air conditioning not functioning?
During the summertime, they, they go up and shut off up to 3:00 in terms of that. One of the things you, in order for us to get these rates, we were in the program in which they call peak days, and so this week, we've already had one of those peak, peak rate days in there, and so when we know the peak rate day is coming, those systems are all tailored back, and we shut them off early, because what happens is when they take a snapshot of your five highest peak days and it shows that you're not consuming all that energy, your rates get better in there as well. During the school year, currently, I do believe the, the times that they go off are 6:00 in terms of that. We are also looking to see, you know, do we, are we going to maybe shut this off an hour earlier, depending what that is, but the air conditioning within those buildings consumes a lot of energy after hours in terms of that, so...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there was some way that we could do zones where we know that people are going to be working, like, in the summertime, when it, when it starts to start?
Well, in the summertime, everyone works days, so those are on all the time, when they're, they're during the days. Everyone's on day shift.
After 3:00, though, probably get hot until 4:00 or 5:00, but when we do, start going back, you know, August is going to be really hot, probably wet sound, the climate does change so long. Anyway, I, I, I am just a little bit concerned that, that we have people working in there that are, could possibly get sick in the temperature and stuff, but if it does continue to be the way they're predicting this year to go, this is supposed to be the first year in history possible, and we go into August here, so it's not worth to think about it anyway. You know, I see, you know, I mean, like, zoning, zoning sort of...
Yeah, when, when there are special events in the building, they do turn them on zones in terms of that.
Okay. Just wanted to check my shift.
Yeah, another option they could do, they could, they could team working clean together, so they're in sections together, but that's, you know, an option for them to, to look at, but...
Well, and I, I'm, I'm just starting out there because I know that there have been questions about before and past, so make sure that we're trying our best to look at it.
Yeah, so it's, it's based on, I mean, even when the kids, when the kids are in there, and it's a really hot peak day, we have, we start drawing them down, but I mean, that's when we go back to what John talked about with the energy savings, us being part of that program, that, that saves huge chunks of, of money, you know, in terms of that, in terms of the peak days, and of course, you can probably speak even better to that as well, so...
I just kind of, we had our condition, there was heat like this back in the, you know, early twenties and all that was in AC, so I couldn't imagine working in some of those conditions.
I was around back then, so I can tell you all...
Yeah, talk, Chris.
It's too light, we can't, we don't have that.
So...
I mean, I know, I probably came to school without any air conditioning forever, but I feel like, I mean, the air quality these days is nasty, and it gets really hot, yeah.
Well, I know, I, I mean, I know the work performance is way lower when you're put in, in, in situations where you stress on your body. Now, I, I, like you said, I, I actually taught in the top of the Lance Building where the roof was outside the windows, taller roof, and my room actually got up over 100 degrees constantly, I mean, many, many days it was that hot. You know, and kids just sit there, they were enough, they're dying, you know, so that's, I'm just, sometimes maybe rock either to pay fall. I'm there.
So we touched on item C, itinerant services for our preschoolers and Kettering preschoolers if necessary, and then satellite court is item D, and that's something we continue every year for our students as an alternative solution. Item E, we have an agreement with St. Rita School for the Deaf for any of our students that require those services. Item F, same as the school for the deaf, boundless works with students with autistic or any other type of disorder that would fall under their disability, under their kind of umbrella of services. IXL is a, a learning recovery tool where students can do remedial online activities that are catered to them spec, like specifically in terms of where their learning gaps would be. So if we have a successful year with this, we are considering doing a three-year contract, which would be a little more affordable in terms of cost per student, so we're going to give it a try this year and analyze the data and evaluate its effectiveness and determine if we're going to move forward with a three-year contract for next year after this. Dayton Christian School, I think that's something we...
Oh, that's the use of Harmon Field, they use that for their Friday night football games. So last time, it was a five-year contract, and we did a three-year contract and made some tweaks in there in which there is a rental fee per event plus they get charged in addition to all the labor that occurs, so whichever employees we get that work that event, they get charged for that full labor amount in terms of that. So, and remember, we talked about that when we redid the facility uses, facility use of usage schedule, we made that change, so. And Dayton Christian, they've been really good, taking care of Harmon Field, they've been really good to work with, and so we have no, no issues with them, so we're, we're glad that we can kind of partner with them and, and do some things with them, so...
Want to talk about Arbiter?
So, the Arbiter Sports Agreement, what that is, is this, we've, we've been using Arbiter for about five to six months now. What they do is they actually handle all the payments to our referees for sports events, which is advantageous for both the district and for the referees, they get paid through ACH to their bank account just the day after they, they do the work, and then Arbiter also handles all the 1099 process and setting them out, so we don't actually have to set the referees up in, in our system through our accounting system to be able to have to pay them directly. Arbiter also takes care of the background checks and all of that compliance issues with, you know, just making sure that everything's going to be up and up with our referees, and I think... everything's going to happen up with our referees. And I think now all the G1 schools are, districts are, are using this now, so.
Any other further questions or comments in regards to any of those items? Here in none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Todvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Eight is our financial agenda items. A is the approval of certificate of available balances fiscal year 2023. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO approval of the following total amount for all sources available for its finishers. For each set fund set up in the tax budget with balances that exist at the end of the fiscal year ending 20 or June 30th, 2022. Note that this is an update to the previously approved certificate of available balances dated June 28th, 2022. B is the approval of return of advances. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO to approve and return the advances made for the following funds. C is the approval of amended appropriations fiscal year 23. Is recommended by the treasurer CFO to approve the fiscal year 23 amended permanent appropriations as presented. D is the approval of transfers. The transfers, or the treasurer CFO recommends that the Board of Education approve the following transfer. E is the approval of the then and now invoices. Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following then and now invoices. F, approval of the disposal of library books, Bishop Libel. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the disposal of 425 library books purchased with auxiliary funds that were housed at Bishop Libel. G. G and H, G is informal settlement granted entered into the treasurer and the CFO. H is the approval of the financial items A Alpha through G Golf. May I have a motion for those financial items in A through G?
I move to approve the financial items A through G.
I did. Motion by Mrs. Neese and I heard right, seconded by Corey. All right, we'll go back to the beginning with Mr. Tusk.
Yeah, so item A is our first certificate, and that was something that I brought to you at the June 28th meeting. This was just the minimal changes from that to this, but I, I did want to bring this back to you because I told you I live in June. When we look at the return of advances on B, this is primarily returning the advance money for our federal grants because the state cuts off the time where we can ask for reimbursements. And so we advance money from the general fund and then we return it right back as soon as the fiscal year starts, and that's what this is. The amended appropriations are just us dialing in more appropriations in terms of primarily our 200 funds and our OEP. We've got some more budgets that we approved at the work session that are plugged in now. The approval of transfers, this is going to be partially the many grants being transferred from the general fund into the O19 accounts. And also a transfer, we, we utilize the 432 fund for all of our EMUS expenses. So we can report to the state exactly how much we spend on the electronic management of student data and financial data. So every year, it's been the case that the district transfers from the general fund into the 432 to pay salaries, benefits for our EMUS coordinator as well as costs that we pay to Meta, who's our ITC. E is that and now invoices, we actually had two just due to when we had the, the insurance renewal on one of the items, which is from Chubb, which is the, sorry, blanking for a second.
Cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity, thank you. And then the other one is a payment. We actually had a contract with Green County ESC. Their rates changed and they did not notice, notify us until we received the invoice, so it caused us to go over the PO. There was a PO in place for that, so we're just asking for your approval to be able to pay those bills. When we look at the disposal of the library books at Bishop Libel, it was reached out to by Bishop Libel. There are 30 and 40-year-old books that were purchased with auxiliary funds. Just as a reminder, with auxiliary funds, if we were to sell these books, we would have to send the money back to the state anyway. They've asked that we dispose of these books, so we're just asking you for your approval to, to do so. A lot of them were just quite, quite, they've run their course in terms of not only the material that's in them, but the shape of the books.
Is that what's from both east and west campuses?
It was the library and I don't know exactly where they're housed right now, but they are pulled aside. I was gonna ask for them to be itemized, but they're all different. There's not like 10 of each one or 12 of each one. They're, they're kind of all over the place. So I did seek opinion on that and we are fit to dispose of them in that manner. They're not in our inventory system either, so since they're below that threshold. And then G is informational. This was at the, the last work session, we passed a resolution to allow me to enter into agreements for direct payments. Yesterday was the last day and we actually had one that came in about six o'clock last night, so turned around and had that sent back. But there are three settlements here that we have entered into, and I'm just providing to you for informational purposes. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
I ask my question.
When they do dispose of books, do they recycle those or how does that work?
They can. Technically, they come to us and we dispose of them. So, yeah, we can usually give a sample.
I didn't know that in the, the covers were, were recyclable. I know the pages are, which is, you know.
Yeah, I mean, from the pictures I've seen, they're, they're hard. They're very, a lot of them are hardback books.
In order for the cautions, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Todvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the Mine Valley Career Technology Center news and information with Mr. Joe Isaacovich.
Good evening. Once again, we're preparing to welcome more than a thousand junior students here very shortly. Last number I saw was a thousand forty-five, which is up. And considering the amount of construction we have going out there, it's very heartening to see that. Some upcoming dates, August 2nd through the 4th is student scheduled pickup. And August 8th is the staff recognition program in the morning. I've been asked to address our teachers and retirees at that time. August 8th to 10th is the staff in service. August 11th is the juniors' first day on campus. And August 12th will be the seniors' first day on campus. And one thing I wanted to bring up, just speaking about the caliber of our programs at CTC. A young fellow from Herbert Heights, from Wayne, James Zibindin, placed third in the nation in the National Aviation Maintenance Technology Contest in Atlanta, Georgia. I mean, third in the nation. And brought home a bronze medal. So I think, you know, we've got a number of programs and sometimes you get lost in the number of programs that we have. You see something like that in aviation is very, uh, great and speaks well of the program. Just a construction update during the month of June and July, the construction team focused on continuing work throughout the building spine. That's the two-story portion of the campus that we built special. It's about three football fields long. Some of our students, the time that it takes about 12 to 14 minutes to get from one end to the other for classes, I should laugh. In the spine, the construction crews are almost finished with all masonry and stub walls. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing installation is continuing. Painters are also working on instructional and office spaces throughout the first and second floor. Heavy-duty vinyl tile has been installed, installed in the science labs, carpeted in a handful of classrooms. And restroom floors are continuing to be installed. Metal roof panels are being installed on the east side of the spine roof. The remainder of the foundation of the old east building is being demolished and hauled away. Lastly, the agricultural complex area is planned to be finished before the end of August. It will include the new animal barn, swine facility, and of course, dry mineral storage. The site work and building pad has also been completed for the new heavy equipment barn replacement. And so we're moving along quite nicely and on schedule. We're fortunate that we ordered and took stock of a lot of the materials that we needed. So we've not been hit too much with shortages from supplies. So that's basically what I've got. Any questions or comments?
Joe, is it something that I get a hold of if, before you guys open? I mean, we've got students from Minersburg, obviously, that go there. And I'm interested to, to kind of walk through. Can you do that? Are you authorized to do that if we go up there? I don't know if any, I mean, I don't know if anybody else on the board would be interested, but I would be, I mean, with all the new construction that's up there and all the opportunities for kids, I think it would be, I think it would be interesting and I think it'd be a learning experience for me. When you talk about different aspects of the kids and what they're doing, at least we have a better understanding of what the facility looks like and what they're doing and. Sure. So I know, do you want me to just get a hold of you individually or talk to them first and then get back with you?
Uh, let me talk to Dr. Wildy about some potential dates because he really likes to guide the tours.
Okay.
And get back to you with some dates and then if folks want to work something out, we'll do it.
Okay, thanks.
I think you'll be super impressed with what's taking place. So, yeah, be happy to do that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else for Joe?
No, that's a great idea though. I would love to go.
Sure.
We'll wear our hundred hat, it's not me.
Yeah.
And your tennis shoes, right? A lot of walking.
Come see shoes.
Uh, B is legislative, it's on Mr. Corey Daffler.
Not much here, they're in, they're on recess.
Good.
Yeah.
Mr. Willis, I believe.
We're also in recess.
A long recess, right?
I believe so.
Summer recess.
Next would be the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition, Mr. Dale Todvine?
We have a meeting today. Montgomery County law enforcement communities are working together a lot now to set up target law enforcement areas where they're working together to try to solve some of the drug issues. People in, in, in people driving intoxicated from either drug or alcohol, sorts of that. They had, they had a, a one day this, this month where they had 83 traffic stops together. They worked together to get some people who were potentially on cause harm to other people. You know, everybody knows a motor vehicle can be considered a weapon if it's in the wrong hands, especially somebody intoxicated or high. So they worked together on that. They're planning another one, another target day here in August coming up. And it's kind of neat to hear those guys talk, to hear police officers talking in the meeting because they, they point out some things that I think we as non-law people don't think about. How many, how many people permanently injured or killed and a high number of them, the high number of accidents where there are people killed is caused by people who are under the influence of something they shouldn't be. Also, we talked about this, the suicide prevention being set up through the coalition. Once again, it was years ago and they were talking about putting that back together, especially for teenagers. So it'll be directly something that we can, probably would take advantage of as a story. That, that's in the developmental stage again. There is a group that is called GROW. And GROW basically works with a lot of inmates and a lot of them are women. And this, over the last two months, they've worked with 181 different inmates in the county jail. They're, they have set up some groups now, but they have a, a groups of, they have 19 groups of women now that GROW goes in and counsels with and helps them to be able to do a lot of different things as far as when they get out of there, if they're addicted, where they can go and get help. You know, when, when they get out, when they get out of jail or out of, whatever program they happen to be in. That seems to be one of the biggest problems that addicted individuals have is when they're put back out on the street, they gotta eat, they gotta somewhere to sleep, they gotta, you know, a, a, a job. A lot of things that a lot of us take for granted, if they got any type of record, what they owe fines, traffic fines or anything, they don't have a license to even go anywhere to get a job. So anyway, the, the, they help counsel those people and correct them where they need to help. Very good. Some of them may have, are familiar with the Green Center that just opened last month. It's located on East Third Street in Manhattan, Dayton. Angie, I can't remember Angie's last name, spoke about the Green Center today. And they're offering, at the Green Center now, homeless people, whether they're homeless free or whether they're homeless in, in one of the programs. A lot of times, they don't have anywhere to wash their clothes, do their laundry, to even take a shower. Well, the Green Center set up now where people can get new clothing because there's a lot of people that don't make it good. It's nice, you know, if you have laundry, it's nice to have some clothes to put on so that while you're doing your laundry.
It's nice, you know, if you have laundry, it's nice to have some clothes to put on so that while you're doing your laundry, you're not running around naked. So they make sure that they, they have extra, extra clothing there for them that they can keep. They get big showers, they provide them the hygiene essentials that they need. It's going over really big. They also are helping, they're bringing people out the street and they have a lot of people there now that are willing to help them write resumes. Because, you know, there's a lot of people that are drug addicts that, you know, they have master's degrees. And they've just, you know, lost direction in their life. And they, they're helping everybody, whether they be, of course, with a master's degree or whether, no matter where they're at as far as education. They're giving them directions on how that they can get a job to keep one. And they help them get transportation and stuff. I think that's one of the really, really big right now, they're dating. The other thing is, is they're, they've got permission by, from some of the businesses in the Montgomery County to set up locks and boxes which are used to save people lives when they overdose now. And they're getting permission from some of the malls and places like that to put these boxes up where they could save lives, could save lives. That's it for me.
Thanks, Mr. Dappler. Next is comments and then we'll adjourn, Mr. Dappler.
I, I think I like the mini grants that got approved, I like that program. And very encouraging hearing the amount of students in C T C. I like that. We need workers out there. It's nice to see young ones going into, going into trades, so that's great.
Mr. Toadvine.
I just, I'm gonna say that I know my grandkids are getting fired up and my people in my family, our teachers in corporate school, they're getting fired up and it's, you know, the closer we get here to the first day of August, the more exciting it's gonna become for everybody. I just hope everybody, since it's gonna happen soon, I just hope everybody has a great year.
Mr. Lewis.
Wanna take a second to thank all of our directors and coaches that are fighting this heat, getting our student athletes ready for fall season. Plus, thank the student athletes for being out there, dealing with this heat. You know, it's, it's fun to go to events, concerts, games, contests. And see our student athletes perform, but it's another thing to thank of all the time spent to get there. That's what's going on now, so big thank you to all and fight through it.
You know, I just wanna say thanks to everyone that's working hard this summer, you know, the custodians, the teachers are in their classrooms. They're, you know, planning, central office, they're taking phone calls all hours of the day on the weekend, doing emails on the weekend. You know, I know the custodians at the high school, you know, they're dealing with all the P I projects. And now they're having students and parents coming in the building, so that's a lot and we appreciate that. I mostly wanna say thanks to our parents and community because they just continue to support Berg schools. And we don't take that for granted, it's highly appreciated. I just do feel like we have some wonderful support. Thank you.
I'll be brief, the mini grants have come a long way since I've been here on this side and they're always very, how am I gonna put this? They're getting more advanced each, each year. But I'm glad that we were able to fund it and it keeps growing and the opportunities do different things. And then also with that, the opportunities like Corey had said, that'd be, I would be thrilled to go out there and take a look at the facility. Other than that, continue to have a great vacation. I know you guys are back and working hard, as well as the two ladies sitting in the back of our room. But I know that the teachers will be back soon and they'll be ready to go and our students will be as well, so.
Mr. Ashby.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone that's working hard over the summer to get prepared for next, next school year. It doesn't go unnoticed, there's a lot of work that happens that I think a lot of people don't see over the summer. It's really important work and it's work that allows the teachers and students the ability to hit the ground running when they come back. So I wanna say thank you to everyone that is part of that team. I also wanna thank the treasures office team. June and July are some of the most hectic times of the year for us and the team has just been awesome in helping me stay sane through the process and make sure we get things done, so I wanna say thank you to all of them as well.
Have some events I wanna mention. Next Friday, the Miamisburg High School Alumni Association is hosting a golf outing and it's at Pipestone on, it's July twenty-ninth. So if anyone is a golfer and wants to go out, they're gonna have some great raffle prizes, a great round of golf and then lunch at T J Chomps. So it's a great cause, they have traditionally given the school about ten thousand dollars, the schools. So it's a great event to support and we appreciate that. National Night Out is a law enforcement evening, kinda like kicking off back to school and getting kids motivated and providing some some great education and also a lot of goodies to our students. That's gonna be on August the second at the Miamisburg Christian Church right here on Central, it's from six to eight. And they've got a lot of businesses already coming and giving out goodies and having prizes and it's a good, a good event. It was well attended last year and they've added, I think, some inflatables and a D J, so it should be a fun night if anybody's around and wants to stop out. I'm definitely gonna be there. It's the Miamisburg Christian Church right here on Central, we can all meet at Tim's and just walk down. So, so that looks like a great event. Also, at the beginning of August, we will be kicking off of our new website. And also, when we have our next meeting, we'll get everyone on their phones and download the Berg Schools app. So you can get all of your information through an app or also through the website, so we're really excited about launching that. Also, on August ninth, we are having our back-to-school carnival for our staff, so you're all invited. We will begin around lunchtime, there'll be food trucks, there'll be some carnival games, we'll have some big top entertainment and some fun and prizes. So you're all invited to that on August the ninth. On August the tenth in the morning, we'll start with Certified and I'm gonna do an overview with a lot of our strategic plan folks sharing out kind of our goals and our progress on our strategic plan. I think Colleen and Clarissa are S E L consultants, will be doing some activities with the staff in the morning and then again in the afternoon with our classified staff. So we'll have a busy first few days of school for our staff members, getting them acclimated. Lot of summer help, our technology department, our maintenance, our custodians, obviously our admin assistants have been working hard. I know Ravella's getting geared up for all of the food service and hopefully all of the supplies are starting to come in, right, Sheri? I know we had some issues in the spring, we had to change some menus and yes, absolutely, so we appreciate that, so, so yeah, so looking forward because when we meet again as a board, we'll have start at school, our next board meeting. We do have a work session that we scheduled to take place in August, I did a doodle pool. I know Tim, you said Mondays of that week, everybody thought, Dale, I didn't hear your vote, but August thirtieth had the most votes, that was a Tuesday. So we'll preliminary start with that, I know you can't attend that evening, so I think you said no that night.
I'll see what I can do.
We could start a little later, if you'd like us to start a little later.
If I have to drive back from Kentucky.
You don't have to drive back. But golf is, I'm close to retirement, so golf is really good. We'll see.
Okay, yeah, so we'll have some, but yeah, that's it for me.
Just a couple things here, so starting next week at the high school, along with all the projects and everything. Miamisburg Police will be conducting active shooter training slash scenario training at the high school. So your one hundredth and two hundredth sections will be closed off. They are not using, obviously, real ammunition or anything, so we're very fortunate to be a partnership with them as they kinda run through scenarios and practice some, some drills within there as well, on there. I know we've, we've talked a lot about the projects, but I do, I do really wanna give a shout out to the high school and the high school custodians. It has been, they have been through the wringer this summer between the P A system change out, the clocks, the roof being on top. The active shooter training, the smart, I mean, it's just, and they've really done a really nice job of all working together and kinda rotating to different places and all that, it's, and I think, you know, this is probably one of the craziest years we've had at the high school in a, in a very long time. And they've, they've really done a nice job. And, and I know Rich and Ed have commented many times that they've just, they've made it happen, they've, they're, there's such a great group of people up there working, so. And then also Mark Twain and Mound too with their projects, they've worked hard within their buildings to make them happen, but the buildings look great, our custodians have done a great job really through a lot of the different projects going on, so. And then kicking off fall sports, so I have two days starting up, all the sports are starting up, I do, we Band Camp starts next week and just the season, ready to go, so. That's all I have. Band should be next Friday and I do believe it's at seven o'clock at Holland. So and I think Mr. Ale would normally send some stuff out to the board to, to let them know about that. I know they have a food truck rally, I do believe that starts at maybe five o'clock.
All right. Next on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Nineteen oh nine.
Corey's ready to go.
One second, who was it? Corey? And Mr. Lewis, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Doppler.
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine.
Yes.
Mrs. Neese.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Amsler.
Yes.